I state your name.
I, Gregory Saroy.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen hereof.
Continue a citizen hereof.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
Town of Hampden, Maine.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties incumbent on me.
All of the duties incumbent.
As councillor at large.
As councillor at large.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. And if you could sign your oaths and then pass them down to me, that would be great.
Thank you. The next order of business, it's my pleasure as the town attorney pursuant to the town's charter, Article Two, Section 204, now that all councils have been sworn and the oath has been taken, I'll solicit nominations or nomination for mayor. Are there any nominations for mayor?
I'd like to nominate David Ryder for mayor.
Second.
Mr. Ryder has been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Ryder? Thank you, unanimous. And I believe that my role here is complete. I'll make a little more room on the dais by going to the audience for now. Thank you. You do the deputy. According to the charter, he does the deputy.
Mr. Mayor, could I get you to stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? I, David Ryder.
I, David Ryder.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen hereof.
Continue a citizen hereof.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties incumbent on me.
All of the duties incumbent on me.
As mayor.
As mayor.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, thanks. If you could sign your oath.
So at this point, I guess we will decide on a deputy mayor. Do I have any nominations for deputy mayor?
I'd like to nominate Greg Saroy. I second that.
Any other nominations? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? None? Do you have to swear him in too?
I have to swear him in too, yeah. If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Gregory Saroy.
I, Gregory Saroy.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen hereof.
Continue a citizen hereof.
And that I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe provisions.
Provisions of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As deputy mayor.
As deputy mayor.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, thanks.
And at this time, then, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? The next item is public comments. At this time, it's a chance for the public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Please come up to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, I'm Jim Davitt. Live at 25 Summer Street. I'm a state representative. I wanted to come here tonight and congratulate the new members of the council and the returning mayor and the new mayor. Got a lot of work to do. And while we're talking about that, our session begins, at least for me, tomorrow in the legislature. I'm pleading with you, if you've got issues that you think I might be able to help with in August, if you've got questions, I urge you to call me and see what we can do to work things out and work together. Look forward to a productive five and a half months. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public for a comment? Seeing none. The next item is policy agenda. Item one, we have no news presentations or awards. Item two, public hearings. For proposed zoning ordinance text amendment, Article 4.8 signs. At this time, I'll ask the planning and development director, Dean Bennett, to explain this, please.
Good evening. Sign amendments that before you were proposed primarily by code officers and myself to address some inconsistencies with state law and issues that have arisen over time with the various sign regulations in town. The sign regulations include some changes being proposed. One is that digital sign provisions have been added to the code since our sign provisions were originally written. The digital signs that you see quite frequently didn't exist, so we need to address those. Political signs provisions within the document have been changed to reflect state regulations. Historically, Hampden has been more restrictive than state regulations. These have been rolled back to be consistent with state regulations. On-premise sign provisions were added to ensure that there was no limitation of free speech. And setback changes also were modified to roll back some regulations, allowing more opportunity for businesses in the placement of signs. All of the document that you have, with only one exception, was reviewed and signed off on by the planning board. That exception being on page four, number six, as I've noted in your documents, nuisance signs. Attorney Russell suggested that the wording read that neighborhood nuisance is no sign shall be maintained in a manner in which the operation and illumination thereof may cause nuisance or undue distractions to nearby residents or occupants. The planning board preferred that to read nuisance signs. No sign shall be erected or maintained in a manner in which the operation of illumination thereof may cause nuisance or undue distraction to nearby residents or occupants. The difference being, as I've provided you a copy of Tom's opinion on this, is that Tom, in his caution, explained in his memo that his reasoning was to ensure that the nuisance must arise from the operation or illumination of the sign, not to the message on the sign, being clear and responsive to recent case law involving freedom of speech issues. Those are the primary changes that have been proposed, reviewed by P and D committee, the planning board coming back to council for action.
Thank you. Any public comment? Discussion?
Yep. Page five, four dot eight dot two eight F. I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head, but there's no more than once every 10 seconds may a changeable sign change. And in the email at the end of this, it says two minutes in one part of it and 20 minutes in the other. What's the right answer? The email he's reverencing with the state requirements, state allowances. The state also provides for the town under home rule to establish something different than that upon notification to the DOT that we've actually done something different. It was the feeling of the planning and development committee and the planning board that the state minimums, the state times, were, I can't say excessive, I'm not sure what the term was, was unnecessarily long in between message changes. And so the planning and development committee and the planning board agreed upon no more than every 10 seconds, shorten that time up considerably. You're welcome.
They have to notify the state that that's...
We do have to notify the DOT if we're going to be more restrictive.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, that the council approve the amended ordinance.
Second.
The one question is, the amended per the planning board or per Tom Russell?
Well, when I looked at this, I couldn't, the part that Tom put in there was the, the planning board put in there was the red portion, correct?
I believe that is correct here. Let me take a quick look here on page four, right? No, Tom's is actually the purple, the original number six up top.
Okay.
The planning board, as it says, recommended is in red.
I mean, because when I read this, they look identical. I don't, the only thing that, the only difference between the top one and the bottom one is the erected.
That's correct.
Is... So is there any significant difference between saying it's erected or maintained, or?
Tom's recommendation is to remove the word erected and to make a point that under neighborhood nuisance, a sign would only be a nuisance if it is operated or illuminated to cause the nuisance, not erected for a purpose.
Okay, I understand. Then I make a motion that we accept the one as suggested by Tom Russell, the one that removes the word erected.
And I will second that.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, folks.
The next item is on their new business, proposed amendments to the training room use policy. That was discussed in our infrastructure committee meeting, and Councillor Marble is the chair.
Yep. I'm gonna do this from memory, so feel free to add corrections or edits. This goes back at least a couple of months. Sergeant Rogers brought concerns forward that I believe he shared first with the town manager about, I don't want to use the word conflict, but about problems with certain public access and use of what we've called a community room vis a vis the work of his department and his employees. He brought concerns forward that were both regulatory about privacy, but also about common sense-based concerns about people's privacy, whether there was an issue going on in that room or an officer entering personal data on a computer. There's just, there was no natural barrier between coming and going of public with functions in that department that should be private or were indeed under statute to be private. He also brought forward concerns about, although they're rare, the possibility of bringing into the building someone who was disruptive or agitated or elevated into the midst of a group situation with members of the public already in the room, and was uncomfortable about the arrangement. This went back and forth once or twice, I think, between committee and edits. It came back to the committee for final review. There was an additional use, and I apologize, I can't remember the four guiding points clearly, I don't have it in front of me. But there had been three, and we added a fourth without the town manager's discretion. And that document was approved unanimously in committee to come forward to the council. And if anyone wants to add those three points, if they have them, that would be terrific.
I don't have the exact points that we were talking about, but one specific topic that we were talking about in this whole scenario was safety. We have the same access door coming into the dispatch office for the police department and the fire department as the actual community room, so there is some concern of safety, safety as well as privacy that we're trying to look at. And I think it's important to note that it's not just a privacy thing, it is also safety for the public.
Sure, I'm happy to review the, it was four and it was expanded to five. Okay. Eligible uses for the public safety training room. The first is as a voting location for all municipal, state, or federal elections. The second is for department training for Hampden Public Safety Department. The third is training for other Hampden municipal departments. The fourth is training space for other governmental entities, including regional trainings. And then the fifth, at the suggestion of Chief Rogers, was to add, as a general rule, non-governmental events, trainings or functions will not be permitted in the training room. However, the town manager, upon consultation with the Director of Public Safety, may approve or deny any request for such use on a case-by-case basis.
Any public comment? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I move the council adopt the final draft of the language of use of the training room. My second.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Seeing none? The next item under new business is discussion of RSU 22 Building Committee recommendation to the school board on 1-6, 2016. Town manager Angus Jennings will explain that.
Sure. As you know, as a matter of course, my office has copied on agendas for meetings of the school board. And since last summer, I've been attending most of the meetings of the school board's building committee, as has our Planning and Economic Development Director, Dean Bennett. We've been particularly interested in the work that's been going on relative to the McGraw Weatherby complex. And that initiative, which is set out in detail in the materials in your packet, there was a handout that was provided at the December 14th meeting, which includes information relative to the potential scope of that project, which is broken into two phases. One is focused on internal and external traffic circulation and access and egress. And the second is relative to potential building addition to connect the McGraw and Weatherby schools. So a couple of issues caught my eye on the agenda last week for the upcoming school board meeting, which is this Wednesday evening. One is the fact that the board will be requested this Wednesday to take, to act upon the building committee's recommended concept plan. And the second item, which refers to the packet and the handout, is that that handout included, for the first time that I saw, a proposed timeline which talked about a referendum as early as June of 2016 for the first phase of the traffic circulation issues. So because the school board's meeting is coming up in just two days, I wanted to bring this to the council's attention. It's been an issue of regular update. And I had reached out to the superintendent's office leading up to the December 14th meeting. And following that meeting, I shared with his office the report that I'd presented to the council's finance committee on December 7th and let the superintendent's office know that I'm working toward an updated report once we receive the updated fiscal year 15 audit, which I think will help to make clear for everybody the town's budgeting situation and financial trends, which I think will be important to take into account in any capital project, whether school or town-related. So because it's coming up so soon, I wanted to bring it to the council tonight to see if you had any direction. My recommended action would be that my office send a letter tomorrow to the school board suggesting that with the impending new information from the FY 15 audit, I think it, and I've already told the superintendent in the email thread that was included in the packet, that I think any decision the school board may make with implications for FY 17, in my opinion, would be premature until we're able to provide full information about the town's financial standing.
Any public comment? Seeing none. Questions, comments? Councilman McPhee?
Yes, I was at that meeting along with Dean, and unless, unless I'm mistaken on that, what I understood, they were presenting to the, to the school board was option 1C on their thing, and only 1C. Now, they may, at the same time, be deciding that they're gonna put the whole packet forward, but their concerns were its traffic flow. And I was, I was not pleased with the, with the recommendation they came through with. WBRC at the time did no investigating of moving any of the traffic, particularly the auto traffic, not the bus traffic, but the auto traffic, out towards the new high school and moving that out towards a new set of lights on Route 9, which is controlled. And in fact, there, if you look at your thing, the 1C that they, that they sent forward brings the traffic in by the superintendent's office, circles it around, and brings it back out onto Route 1A again. And my concern, as I stated at that time, was the fact that during the, during the spring and during the fall, when school is in session, you still have an awful lot of traffic, trailers and other things going down through it all the time. And you're asking us to perhaps put police out there to direct the traffic coming out, because there is a lot of traffic. Or number two, the chance that our ambulances or fire trucks are gonna have a problem getting through if they need be. So I really wanted them to look at going back again and seeing if they could get it back over towards coming out by the lights. But I did not get any response from that, as near as I can understand, this is what they want to do and this is what they're putting in. And I just wanted to bring you up to date. I don't know what the councilor's feelings are on that, but I think it'd be an awful lot safer if we could get the traffic maybe in off Route 1A, but out in some other direction.
Before they do any kind of work like this, wouldn't they have to do a traffic study of some sort? Have they done that yet to figure this out?
I'm not aware of a traffic study that was, there was a traffic study done back in roughly 2009 in anticipation of the new construction of the new Hampden Academy. I'm not aware of anything done more recently.
And I think that one probably wasn't completely followed out here by the lights, so that's why we're getting quite a bit of congestion, and we're getting congestion from all three areas. So, I mean, it is a pretty big concern, not to mention the capital expense that they're talking about. I mean, this is, this is a big project. And, yeah, I'm pretty concerned about it, that's for sure.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yeah, just adding on to what Steve was saying, that to say it's, you know, a capital investment is, you know, we don't know, do we? Do they have made any suggestion of any kind what this might cost?
No, in fact, they've been specific in saying on a number of occasions that there are no cost estimates available. So part of my question to the superintendent's office last week, I'm aware that the school board previously, in their five-year strategic plan, had set out the McGraw Weatherby complex as part of what they wanted to look at. And my assumption is that all of the work done to date on conceptual planning has been covered by that prior vote. And I think at this point, the building committee is looking for the school board to proceed to the next step of design. But it would be at least several months and potentially next fall before anything went to the voters in terms of referendum. So they would need to complete some amount of more substantial design to come up with good cost estimates, but we haven't been provided any even orders of magnitude cost estimates.
Okay, so when you said they were, you know, thinking about bringing it up for vote in June of 16, that's six months from now. Did you mean next year?
Well, I'm, my assumption is that that is not their, their plan. I think they're looking at the fall of 2016. But the handout, I was not at the December 14th meeting because we had a different meeting that night. The handout refers to June of 2016 on the Gantt chart. And so one of my questions to superintendent last week is, is that the current thinking? And I didn't get a response to that question.
Thank you.
Again, from what I took, and maybe Dean heard differently, but from what I took from that meeting was they were sending option 1C forward to the school board. And that was primarily done because now the buses have to circle out and come out onto 1A along with the incoming traffic. Their concern was child safety, and they want to separate buses in one area and automobiles in another area. And I don't know if this thing goes and they pass this through the way they're doing it, rather they, they're doing it now. So do they even need a traffic study? Or can they just turn around and say, we'll spend X amount of dollars up in here to put the roads or gates in that we want to do and continue going it the way it's going? Because now, all they're doing now is taking buses out in another direction and storing the buses over in a different area and circling the cars around. If you look on that and you see 1C, you'll see the two different areas on that, that they're doing that. And that was my understanding, that was the only thing that they were putting forward to the board. However, I don't know what they actually do until they have the meeting.
Well, that is correct. The scope of what's going to be considered Wednesday is just the transportation aspect. That is, that one part of my inquiry to Superintendent Lyon's office that he did respond to. He said it was just limited to that portion, but I frankly asked for detail about exactly what action is being requested. And I haven't gotten anything on that.
Councilman Saroy? If you look at option 1C, the final page also includes additions, which includes a walkway. So is that, when you're talking 1C, did they, was there any conversation around the additions? No? Okay.
Councilman McAvoy?
Well, if you look at 1C, it looks like they're going to be putting in, if they adopt this, I mean, the, it looks like they're, well, it looks like they'll be adding some impervious surface over there. And I thought they were maxed out as far as, you know, what they had available for impervious surface over there. Maybe not, but I, you know. So I was just kinda curious, you know, whether the town is gonna be asked to help them again to find, you know, some offsetting, you know, lands somewhere. And if so, how much?
Any other discussion? Do we, what's the favor of the council? Do we want to send a letter?
I think we probably should send a letter over there about our concerns. So we have a lot on our plate this year with the budget season coming up. And it's gonna be a tough, tough season this year, planning for everything. And to have this come at us also, I think that if we can get a little bit more information from the school board or from the superintendent, it's only gonna help us with our long-term plans that we're trying to put in place. It's desperately needed, as much information as we can get.
Any other comment?
Any other comment?
So we good with that?
Yep. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda under new business is to set dates for the annual council goals and objectives sessions. Town Manager Angus Jennings?
So historically, the council has held a public session to brainstorm goals and objectives prior to getting into the formal budget process. And I understand that's been a productive process, and we certainly want to continue that this year. So we wanted to start the conversation today about scheduling that. The one wrinkle that I would like to add to the process, which goes back to my interviews and conversations we had then, drawing on some of my prior work in town halls where I put together town-wide strategic retreats that bring together both staff and elected officials and the public to have really a broad conversation about objectives, you know, challenges, opportunities, constraints, to basically add grist for the mill, to get the council as much information as possible before getting into the kind of nuts and bolts of the costs and revenues. So I talked to Mayor Ryder about whether it would be practical to try to do both of those things at the same session. I think we both agreed that would be a lot in one day. So if, you know, it's obviously up to the council how, how you'd like to proceed, but I would suggest a two-step process could be very helpful to everybody, where there's an initial session that I would take responsibility for organizing, to get, get the council as much information about the operations of the different departments, how, how they're structured from a personnel standpoint, from services, where they see their departments going over the next year and beyond. And then to have a follow-up session, whether that's, you know, a few days later, a week later, or two weeks later. But at that point, it would be the council processing all of what you do over the course of the year, as well as that retreat.
And not to be confused, when he says retreat, we're not going anywhere.
Right. It's all public posted meetings with minutes and so forth, so.
So how early would we like to get started?
Well, the, the FY 15 audit will be complete within a week. And on the January 19th council finance committee, I'll be, the audit itself will be in your meeting packet, as well as an updated financial analysis, which will build on the work that I presented in December to take that more into the current situation. So I think the January 19th meeting will provide you a lot of information, which will, it won't, I'm not seeing that as the formal start of the budget process, but I think sometime after that, but before the budget process formally starts, would be, would be helpful. So I would suggest toward the end of this month or early February.
Suggestions?
How about the first, we did this on Saturday, correct? How about the first Saturday in February? That works for me, anyway.
February 6th? I think it's a good idea.
February 6th going to work for everybody? Any public comment? All that could be determined. So tentatively, February 6th for our beginning of our annual goals and objectives. Very good.
And did you want to schedule two dates, or do you want to start with something with departments and then try to organize that to get the most value out of it, and then see what we feel is needed after that?
Personally, I think we should meet with department heads and do that first, and then.
So.
Set up a date after that, at that meeting.
Okay.
I agree with Mayor Ryder, I think we should get some input from the department heads. The first, the first meeting should probably be structured that way.
Any other comments from anybody? Okay. Committee reports will probably be pretty late tonight, because I don't think we have any committee reports. Infrastructure, Councilor Marble?
Excuse me, it could be here a while, it took minutes, remember?
Okay.
Trying to summarize, we had a meeting December 28th, went over the draft policy, changed for use of the training room, which we voted on tonight. Bids for upgrading the HVAC, HVAC system were reviewed. That was referred to finance. Information concerning library upgrade project was reviewed. We reviewed a bad sewer hookup for one property on Sunrise that had been rectified, and Department Director Curry had noted, noted the importance of inspections in the permitting process. There was significant discussion concerning sewer connection fees, sewer rates, costs, and the financial status the town is in regarding said. Committee was in agreement that the town needs to face the problem and act, knowing that it won't be an easy vote or easy on residents, with the understanding that the connection fees are an ordinance and will require time for process. Emphasis to tackle the necessary rate changes took priority. And after a lot of discussion, the committee unanimously agreed that there ought to be a special meeting to discuss this, which will be 6:00 PM Wednesday, January 13th, a week from this Wednesday, here at 6 o'clock. Sort of in connection with the traffic flow at the schools as just reviewed, we reviewed where things appeared to stand with the signal controller and DOT on 202. Department Director Courier and the town manager have been on this, in contact with DOT. There's a problem both with that system not adequately handling the backup of school-related traffic at certain times, and also has people, I believe, like our mayor, sitting in a coal car waiting for 10 or 15 minutes to cross the, the road late at night, which is unnecessary. So we'll try to get on that. The department director reviewed his plans for plowing roads and sidewalks. There was some frustration expressed with the need to expend resources on plowing sidewalks that aren't used enough, and the possibility, the possibility that the transfer station might have to be occasionally closed due to dedicating labor to plowing. The committee agreed to support current plans and review things as needed.